Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call roll.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The minutes of January 25th, are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, they stand approved as presented. I'm kind of looking around because I'm going to do proclamations and ceremonies and Diane Robb is supposed to be here to present. She was. Go holler in. Is Diane with us? There she is. I see we have an art piece coming into the room. Do you want me to read this proclamation or do you want it?
Of course.
Okay.
You should read it.
Okay.
I will just stand behind you.
All right. And admire a little if you can. This is proclamation for the STEAM team, we'll call it that, Science Technology Engineering Arts and Math. Whereas the Wheat Ridge High School Science Technology Engineering Arts and Math STEAM program provides opportunities for students to incorporate art into an educational program that typically only addresses technical skills. Whereas STEAM is building up a full-sized sculpture to place within the city limits of Wheat Ridge, whereas STEAM is involving numerous community members in the creation of said sculpture. Whereas STEAM has presented this conceptual work to the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission, which supports an artistic expression and cultural opportunities within the city limits. Whereas the Cultural Commission admires the conceptual design and encourages the students to continue their artistic endeavors. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge do hereby recognize and honor the Wheat Ridge High School STEAM program as a valuable contributor to the community. Please come forward and let's see that sculpture. And I would like you to present this. Wow. Is somebody going to describe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here. You want to sit up right here. All right, so we're from the Wheat Ridge High School STEAM team. And this year, we are a brand-new class to Wheat Ridge High School and we're building a sculpture. So, the first semester, we really worked on making sure that we knew what we were wanting to do. We made all of our ideas, we voted on stuff, and we decided on this project. And there's a pretty cool thing going on at Wheat Ridge High School this year with Freddie Steinmark. And so, we kind of built on that and we decided to do a hand in a tree, kind of signifying, holding in the hope and holding on to life. And so, as we've been working through just the different stages of building a sculpture within, for public viewing, we are working towards building it this semester. And so, we're going to build it in-house at the high school. And so, as you can see, that's a quarter-size model. So, the hand, when it's complete, will be six feet tall. And the branches of the tree will go on to be about four more feet. And so, we decided we are going to place it at the Lutheran Medical Campus, since we really love what they're doing there with their healing and just how they are a great place of hope for all of the people that go through there. It's going to be placed outside of the infusion center. And we actually went and got to see where it would be last week. So, that's what we've been doing. And we also have figured out that it's going to be made of aluminum. So, the layers are going to be aluminum, two inches thick. And then, the spacers and the tree will be stainless steel. Oh, I'm Amy. And I'm a junior, Amy Laisher, and I'm a junior.
Thank you, Amy. Well, that's really interesting, very lovely.
As Chair of the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission, it is our honor, along with Sandy Nance, who's on the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission, it truly is our honor to present this proclamation to each and every one of the students involved in this program. We look forward to the installation of it.
Was my mic on? No.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
That's cool. That's really cool. That really is. Oh, you'd like that, huh? Well, it looks like it is. It's obviously gross and...
Special tradition base.
What is that? Oh, okay. Not sure what that agenda number is. General. I did. I did, I did. Okay, I believe we can move on to citizens' right to speak. And we have under a general item number, general, I think is what that word is, Michael Illo? Illo?
Madam Mayor, could I announce that anybody that has signed up to speak tonight, would you please say your full name and spell your last name and say your home address, please? Thank you.
My name is Michael Illo. That's spelled I-L-L-O. I live at 11302 West 38th Avenue. I remember when, in October, there was a campaign for reelection for a lot of the incumbents. Remember the Wheat Ridge Listens slogan? It was, now that the election's over, I don't feel the council majority has lived up to that slogan, not by a long shot. For instance, when our city voted against changing the curb lines on 38th Avenue, instead of listening to what the voters had to say, you discredited them. You basically say that the wording of 2B was confusing. The voters didn't understand what they were doing. You wasted hundreds of thousands of dollars, as well as our time over the years accomplishing next to nothing. And you continued doing so, pushing for a development plan that people simply don't want. These so-called planning sessions are more like steering sessions. And while you said things like, quote, "The road width won't change", in reality, the street designs now up for final consideration do have changes to the road width, as well as significant alterations to the curb lines. And so, early in the year, in regards to another more recent election result, that of ballot question 300, you are again refusing to represent your constituency, who want to put the proposed Walmart with its TIF package to a city vote. Again, we are told that the wording of that ballot measure was flawed. Can't we, voters, do anything right? We are well aware of the wording. We've heard plenty of the rhetoric from Ford Wheat Ridge, the smear campaign that was meant to defeat 300. We know where you guys stand. We know that you guys wanted that measure defeated. That's all should be in the past, but it doesn't seem to be so. We have spoken, and the citizen majority disagrees with what many of the council majority feel. We, in fact, see many more flaws in the language of quadrant lawsuit than in the wording of ballot measure 300. But once again, it seems that the council majority has let your personal preferences override your civic duty to act as our representatives. You kiss up to special interests, but you exhibit derogatory position toward the voter. What ironic, how ironic this is, that the council majority's actions are so early in this year, when you look back just a few short months ago at the Wheat Ridge Listens campaign slogans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, approval agenda, are there any changes to tonight's agenda? None, then we'll go forward, beginning with the first ordinance on first reading, which I believe is Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill 04-2016, ordinance vacating the western 19 feet of Marshall Street, adjacent to 4901 Marshall Street, within the city of Wheat Ridge, county of Jefferson, state of Colorado. Case number WV1601, Marshall Street vacation. The request for a vacation of the right-of-way by the city Public Works Department is due to the timing of the proposed redevelopment of the adjacent property at 4901 Marshall Street by the property owner. Staff is currently reviewing a planned building group application to be considered by Planning Commission at a future public hearing. As a part of the review process, Public Works evaluated the street configuration and has determined that the western 19 feet is not necessary to retain now, nor should be in the future. The existing right-of-way width is, in this location, is 110 feet. Should the vacation be approved, the resulting right-of-way width will be adequate to provide for street width and accompanying amenities that are described in the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan. The right-of-way was obtained by the city by operation of law from Jefferson County. When the city was incorporated, prior to Jefferson County's possession, it was understood that it was a state of Colorado right-of-way and now abandoned state highway, which explains the excessive width. When I-79, I-76 were built, it rendered future regional expansion of the Marshall Street highly unlikely. Staff was unable to locate the dedication documents transferring the right-of-way to the state of Colorado originally, transferring it again to Jefferson County. I'll skip the last part, but is a motion in order?
Yeah, this is first reading, so please go ahead and give us a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill 04-2016, an ordinance vacating the western 19 feet of Marshall Street, adjacent to 4901 Marshall Street, within the city of Wheat Ridge, county of Jefferson, state of Colorado, on first reading. Order published, public hearing set for Monday, March 28th, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Seconded. Seconded by Ms. Davis. Please go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item number three, Councilmember Wooden. Item two, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number 17-2016, a resolution approving a development agreement for the Fruitdale School property. At issue, the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority has owned the historic Fruitdale School since April 2011. The authority gave thorough consideration of various options to develop or reuse the property on their own, in their capacity as a housing authority. Ultimately, they determined no option would be financially feasible or prudent. Since early 2014, the authority has been actively seeking a private developer partner. In February 2015, the authority entered into an exclusive negotiation period with Hartman Eli Investments, an established local development firm with extensive experience in redeveloping and repurposing historic properties. Over the course of the past year, various redevelopment scenarios have been considered, along with associated financial pro formas. It has long been understood that this project would require creative financing strategies and likely a public-private partnership. A development agreement has been drafted to include the details of a proposed public-private finance plan. The attached resolution approves that agreement and would commit city funds to the project in the form of a grant in the amount of $470,000 and a short-term loan in the amount of $1.9 million.
Thank you. Do we have any staff discussion?
Just a short staff report. As councils will, where we've gone over the elements of this agreement on a number of occasions. In your last meeting, you approved a term sheet, which was kind of the boil-down list of the main points of the agreement, principally including the city loan, the city grant. There's a housing authority loan, a housing authority grant. There are a number provisions for payback of the loans, or at least the loan to the city. We spent the time since last meeting rendering that term sheet into the development agreement that you see in your packet. And while that's considerably longer and more complex, it is faithful to the term sheet. It's longer, as it must, and there's a lot of provisions that are kind of standard, if you will, and just operative to be able to operate the terms of the term sheet. And if you obviously have questions on any of the details, we'd be happy to answer them. Jim Ely from Hartman Eli is here, who will be, of course, the principals of Fruitdale School Partners LLC. And he's here, he worked with us very closely over the last two weeks to achieve the form of this agreement. And his company's in agreement with this. Welcome to hear from him if, or ask him any questions. I don't think he's intending to make a presentation unless you have questions of him, or of me, or of Patrick. And any of us are happy to answer any questions you have about this agreement.
Are there any questions of Mr. Dahl? Ms. Duran?
Can you kind of explain a little bit about the account, the interest-bearing liquid account that was set up from funds from CDOT? It was a grant, if I understand correctly? Or Patrick, can you tell us about that?
Yeah, the city treasurer did set up a separate account. We received reimbursement from a grant that the city received for the Kipling Trail Project. We received, I think, about $1.2 million in reimbursements for that project. So, which helped us out because those funds are liquid. They weren't tied up in any type of investment or CDs. So, we went ahead and put those in a separate account that, basically, money market accounts, getting a little bit of interest, not much. But, so those funds, excuse me, will be available to, for the city's, excuse me, grant and loan portion. It's not everything that we need, but it's a good chunk of it. And the development agreement stipulates that the city's loan will gain interest of 1.5% from the developer, which is similar to what the city would get if it invested those funds into a three-year CD.
Thank you.
Mr. Gough, those are still part of the reserve? Or are they still counted as part of the reserve?
Yeah, they are, they are part of the city's reserves. It's just that, it's just that they're liquid at this point. So, instead of reinvesting those funds, we knew this project was coming up. We put, the city treasurer put those in a money market liquid account, so the funds would be available.
So, the cash is ready and we're getting reimbursed?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I am in favor of this, but I just have a few questions here, detailed questions. In page seven, which is page 30 of the packet, it says, "The city loan shall be evidenced by a nonrecourse promissory note." Could you tell me what a nonrecourse promissory note is?
Sure, it's the, pardon me, it's the promissory note that until your house is paid off, you have on your house, meaning that the secured party, and we're the secured party in that, the city is the secured party in that case, has rights only as against the asset, not as against the personal assets of the borrower. So, it's the promissory note against your house when you get a house loan. But if you default on that house loan, the bank can only repossess and foreclose on its note and deed of trust on the house. Sell the house, keep that money, but they can't sell your house, your, excuse me, can't sell your car, access your other bank accounts, et cetera. And that's a fair thing to do here, understanding that if everything falls apart, then it was important to the city, that the city have a seat at the table. Of course, that nonrecourse loan will be, or nonrecourse promissory note will be secondary to the primary bank financing and the equity financing. And I want to make sure you know that. That means that if there's not enough money to even pay them, then there won't be any money for the city. But in my experience, it's very important to have a seat at the table with these things. And if you do have a deed of trust, a note and deed of trust, you are at least part of that conversation. And very often, there's some kind of workout. And then, it really is helpful that you are a deed of trust holder, so that you have that authority.
Okay, a follow-up question. It sounds like this is very related. But on page 33 of the packet, page 10 of the contract, item three, it says, "The city and the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority are not guaranteed developers' repayment of the city and Wheat Ridge Housing Authority loan or grant amounts noted herein, other than their rights to repayment under section 5.02." Is this, can you tell me what 5.02 is?
Sure, 5.02 provides for the city to be repaid from the tax credits and the home funds that the developer will be applying for, which aren't in hand yet. Now, of course, there's, and I think this was explained even when we looked at the term sheet, there's that small gap of time between when the agreement's, the loan is made and those tax credits come in. You can't get the credits ahead of the project. But the city's rights to repayment are in those tax credits and the home funds, which are expected to be sufficient. Nevertheless, it was important to me, beyond that, to have the fallback of the promissory note as well. I think it's described in that same section on page 10, that there's this waterfall repayment if there's a sale or refinance. And you'll notice that the city is number two in that waterfall on page 11 of the agreement, paragraph 3B. First in line is the housing authority loan. Second in line is the city's loan. So, we have really those three ways of being repaid. The tax credits, home funds, the proceeds on refinance. And in clearly second place, but still a second place, promissory note and deed of trust.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'll keep this short, because I talked at length about the financing and how I didn't think that the taxpayers were aware of just how much of their money goes into these projects. There again, I would hope that people look up the pro formas here and get a real feel for how much taxpayer money is going into this project. Now, there are issues that some of us come in from Jefferson County, and that, to me, is still taxpayer money. And then, the argument there is, well, would we rather have that county money go to another city rather than come to Wheat Ridge? And I understand this is, you know, in general, going to pass favorably here by the board. But at some point in time, I wish we could address a little bit more open process upfront, so the citizens know exactly how much taxpayer money is going into these development projects.
Anything else?
I guess I just have a question in regards to something Mr. Matthews just said. I don't believe there was anything that was not transparent in this process. So, I'm curious if there's something that you thought was not transparent. I believe that the housing authority has made, their meetings are public, aren't they? Okay, so I don't believe there was anything that was not transparent, and it's all on public record.
Anything else? Okay, let's, gosh. Is a motion in order? We, no, we need public comment. I'm sorry, I have, I don't believe there is any public comment on this one. Now, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 17-2016, a resolution approving a development agreement for the Fruitdale School property.
Seconded. Seconded. I believe Mr. Fitzgerald got it out first. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Mr. Pond, you know, I want to make a special announcement as we go down the line here, because we're going to get to it very quick. If you have not signed up, please do so, because I see there's some items, number six, people want to, some people want to talk, but I will only be taking those people who have signed up. So, please, if you want to discuss or make public comment on an item, please do sign up, okay? Item number three, Mr. Pond, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to award the 2016 crack seal project to Precise Striping LLC, Frederick, Colorado, in the amount of $116,400, with a contingency amount of $5,820. And authorize the Director of Public Works to issue a change orders up to a total contract in contingency amount of $122,220. At issue each year, the city conducts crack sealing on selected streets as part of the ongoing preventative maintenance program. The 2016 crack seal project will provide street maintenance throughout the city by priority. The crack filling treatment will reduce water infiltration of the pavement and extend the pavement life of these streets as part of the ongoing maintenance program. This project is the first of three preventative maintenance projects that the city will implement this year, the other two being the slurry seal and the asphalt overlay projects. The apparent low responsible and responsive bidder is Precise Striping LLC, Frederick, Colorado, in the total amount of $116,400.
Thank you. Public Works Director, did you, were you just here for questions or?
Just here for questions, no staff report.
Do we have any questions of the Public Works Director? Ms. Duran?
How are the streets prioritized? How do you determine that?
They're prioritized by a pavement management program. It's a, part of what makes that up is a software program, where we go out and actually rate the condition of the streets every year. We get, we could do about a third of the streets every year. And then, as part of our maintenance program, we have three types of treatments. There's the crack sealing, slurry seal, and then also the mill and overlay, the asphalt paving. And which treatment we use depends on the rating of the street and the condition. Essentially, we try to get the best bang for the buck we can. The overlays tend to be used more on the streets that are in a little bit more of a deteriorated state and the crack filling, maybe on the streets that aren't quite at that point yet where they're deteriorating. But we do the crack sealing to keep water from getting under the pavement, which is kind of its worst enemy. So, it's all based on the pavement condition, the rating of the street, you know, doing the best treatment at the right time for the street.
Other questions of Mr. Brink? Ms. Wooden?
And after those ratings and those conditions are rated, how, in what order are the streets? So, you're rating the streets based on their condition, and then your department makes those decisions, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so those decisions are not made by city council? That's Public Works, based on condition? That's what I want to confirm, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
So, I have just a question on Dover Street. Because I know we had talked about, and this is 44th to 38th. And I know we talked about some drainage issues right there on 41st. And is any of that being taken into consideration? Because I know that we've talked about some ongoing issues right there, so I'm not, is that a part of the plan?
For this year, Dover Street is on a slurry seal treatment.
Okay.
Typically, you know, as far as drainage issues go, unless it's an easy fix, you know, where we can go in and do some grading on the side and so forth, you know, we'll try and do that kind of similarly to what we did on 32nd Avenue last year when we did mill and overlay. We put in some new drainage pipe and so forth. But, you know, our pavement management, our budget for the mill and overlay, it's strictly for, you know, street preservation. If there's little things we can do to help drainage, we'll do that. But if it's a significant expense, then it's a whole other project, drainage project, that requires... that requires a whole different budget.
Is there any way you could like write yourself a note to look into it at least? Because, I mean, I would hate to spend all that money and then turn around and spend just as much to try and fix it. So I don't know if there's a way that you could even just go and look at it and if there's a, like you said, a small little fix, at least to buy some time. But I know that that was one of the areas that really, there's drainage issues right there.
Sure, we can look at that further.
All right.
You know, it's part of a larger discussion with the whole drainage issue sitting wide that we, you know, talked about with council last fall and kind of longer term, coming up with a plan for that.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Please go ahead.
Thank you. I move to award the 2016 Crack Seal Project to Precise Striping LLC Frederick Colorado in the amount of $116,400 with a contingency amount of $5,820. And that the Director of Public Works be authorized to issue change orders up to a total contract in contingency amount of $122,220.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Matthews? Please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Ms. Hoppy, item number four.
Motion to approve the slurry seal project contract renewal with A1 Chip Seal Company, Denver, Colorado, in the amount of $114,865. And to approve a contingency amount of $5,750. And that the Director of Public Works be authorized to issue change orders up to a total contract in contingency amount of $120,615. At issue, the 2016 slurry seal project will provide needed maintenance treatments to various local streets throughout the city. The slurry seal treatment will rejuvenate the wearing course and reduce water infiltration under pavements. The treatment will also extend the pavement life of these streets as part of the ongoing maintenance program. This project is the second of three preventative maintenance projects that the city will implement this year. The other two projects are crack seal and overlay projects. Staff has successfully negotiated the contract renewal with A1 Chip Seal Company, Denver, Colorado, in the total amount of $114,865 to treat a number of selected streets slated for 2016.
Thank you. Any staff report or questions of staff on this particular item? Mr. Matthews?
How long have we been doing the slurry seals? And I think just for the people's information too, how do we go back and make sure we're getting a bang for a buck? In other words, that, you know, if we project three years of, three years of additional pavement life or what have you, that we're, you know, getting what we're paying for that way, that it's actually working?
Yeah, the slurry seal treatment's been, in combination with the other treatments, has been going on for several years. I don't recall right off the top of my head, but we do rerate the streets every year. And depending on how much money we put in the budget for our preventive maintenance program, it's kind of fluctuated up and down through the years as far as the amount of money in the budget we put each year. But, you know, generally, we've been, you know, we monitor that pretty close, the treatments, what's the most effective thing to do at the right time and overall, citywide, when we look at the ratings comprehensively as a whole, are we making improvements? And then we tweak that up and down as it makes sense to do more overlays or cut back on those and do the slurry seal. Again, it gets back to, you know, what's the best bang for the buck in the long term? So we do monitor that year to year with the ratings.
I appreciate that, Mr. Brink. Just some people ask if it's really necessary to make all that mess and is it really accomplishing anything because it looks, you know, just a little like almost painting the street? And I just want to bring out that fact that we are monitoring it and it does have benefit and it's a good use of our money.
Thank you. I don't have any public comment. I believe the motion is in order though.
I move to recommend the slurry seal project contract renewal with A1 Chip Seal Company, Denver, Colorado, in the amount of $114,865 with a contingency amount of $5,750. And that the Director of Public Works be authorized to issue change orders up to a total contract in contingency amount of $120,615.
Second?
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Matthews? By Ms. Duran? Please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, we're going to, item number five, and this one is, I'm going to read the prelude to it, is a motion to approve appointments to boards and commissions. And at issue is board and commission vacancies were advertised in the Wheat Ridge Transcript Channel Eight, Facebook, and the city's website. Current members were contacted by mail and asked if they wanted to serve another term. Applicants were received and compiled by the clerk's office with notification to council on the status. Now I will ask each council group or each district to please announce or move to appoint the ones particularly in their district, and I'll start with District One.
I would like to move to reappoint Betty Jo Page to the Board of Adjustments, term ending three-two, 2019. I move to reappoint Robert Eldridge to the Liquor Authority Board, term ending three-two, nineteen. I move to appoint David Rutter to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term ending three-two, nineteen. I move to reappoint Alan Buckman to the Planning Commission, term ending three-two, nineteen.
Second? Seconded by Ms. Hoppy? And I think we can go ahead and vote on that group, and then we'll move to the next one, so please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero.
And then District Two.
I do have a question for the clerk. I did receive an additional application this afternoon for one of the positions, and I wondered if that was able to be considered or how does that weigh in?
These are deadline, isn't there?
Janelle?
Janice Redd?
Janelle?
Can I just make a quick comment because we have a similar situation in District Four? And I would like to suggest that if we postpone maybe for two weeks until we can process that application, is that similar to what you have?
Yeah, it's, the application just came in at like one-thirty today.
Okay.
Is that the one we talked about?
Mm-hmm.
We do have the ability to postpone if needed, to, I believe it's the first meeting in March.
Just for those who want.
Yeah, for those. Zach, did you want to postpone it though, or do we want to open it up and give it to other folks to consider if they have the opening?
I'm not sure. The, what other opening?
Well, no, I mean, we already had the one member reapply, so we talked about consistency. So I didn't know if you were, I mean, we can talk about it offline, but. Yeah, why don't you? Okay. It sounds like more conversation is needed, so on this, on District Two, if you can, just go ahead and wait till the march and then we'll make, we can do that, right? We can do appointment in March?
Well, you can, you can appoint, you can appoint the ones that you're, that you know and postpone the one that you don't.
Do you want to do that? Okay, please go ahead.
I move to appoint David Koontz to the Board of Adjustment, term ending March second, 2019. I move to appoint Robert Phillips to the Building Code Advisory Board, term ending March second, 2019. And I move to appoint Scott Ohm to the Planning Commission, term ending March second, 2019.
Second? Second. So as we moved and seconded, please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, then we'll hold the other one, the Liquor Authority Board, until the next meeting. District Three, please.
I move to appoint John Milks to the Liquor Licensing Authority and Emery Dorsey to the Planning Commission, Bobby Rubina and Jarrett Gronski to the Cultural Commission.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, please cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero.
District Four?
I move to appoint Claudia Worth to the Liquor Licensing Authority, term ending three-two, I mean, March second, 2019. And I move to appoint Janet Leo to the Planning Commission, term ending March second, 2019. And I move to postpone for the Cultural Commission for District Four.
I think the Janet Leo position was March second, 2018.
Eighteen, okay.
Do we have a second on that?
Second?
Please go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero.
And to the Board of Adjustment alternate position, do we have? Of course we, no, we don't have anyone. Do you want to hand me that one? We do have someone for the, for the Jefferson Library Liaison, which has not occurred in quite a while. And I move to appoint Nicole Kathleen Carter to that position. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Woodin. And please cast your vote. I believe that concludes.
Motion.
Oh, sorry.
Motion carries eight zero. Who, who was, made the motion? Okay.
I made it.
Okay.
The mayor made the motion?
I, well.
It's going to need to be someone else. It's going to need to be someone else.
Janice, do it. Janice, please do it.
So are we ratifying your, are we ratifying her appointment?
I don't know, there was, I usually just do it, so.
If that's the case, then you don't need council action. So if what you were doing is exercising your power to make that appointment, then great and you can simply declare that. I'm, I'll confess, I'm unclear whether this is a, an appointment's made by the council. Now, it's made by the mayor. Is it confirmed by the council? Do we know that?
Yeah, confirmed by the.
I believe it's ratified by the council.
Okay, then I think the proper procedure, honestly, I think the motion that was taken and voted on is just simply ineffective since the mayor can't make that particular motion. The proper procedure probably would be for the mayor to, to, to declare that she wishes to appoint that person. And then for another council member to make a motion to ratify that mayoral appointment, that can be seconded and voted on. So if you'd make that, that statement that you wish to appoint someone.
I wish to appoint Jessica, was it?
Nicole.
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 Nicole Kathleen Carter.
Okay, as.
Oh, yes, so.
You're the one, you're the one making the appointment.
So then I make the motion.
Then you make the motion.
I move to appoint Nicole Kathleen Carter to the Library Liaison.
What you're doing is ratifying the mayoral appointment.
Ratify.
Yeah.
The mayoral appointment. Second.
Okay, now we have a new, a new second? Councilmember Wooden was the original second of the motion, okay? Did you vote? Okay, I'm sorry. Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, let's move on to item number six. Ms. Duran, would you like to read that?
A motion to direct the city attorney to defend count two, the constitutional claim in the quadrant litigation. Issue: At the February eighth, 2016, regular council meeting, discussion took place concerning city's response to the quadrant litigation and whether the city council wished to waive the attorney-client privilege with respect to the direction given the city attorney concerning that lawsuit. Councilmember Duran made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Urban, to direct the city attorney to defend count two, the constitutional claim, in that case. Councilmember Hoppy made a substitute motion to postpone action on Councilmember Duran's motion until the February twenty-second, 2016, regular council meeting. That motion passed, and Councilmember Duran's motion was delayed or was postponed to February twenty-second. Since the February eighth council meeting, the city attorney has filed the city's answer in the quadrant litigation in accordance with direction obtained in executive session. The city defending count one in the suit, the administrative legislative claim, and remaining neutral on count two, the constitutional claim. Under the applicable rules of civil procedure in the district court, the city is permitted to amend its answer. In the event Councilmember Duran's motion passes, the city attorney will proceed to file an amended answer. If the motion does not pass, the city will proceed with the defense of the case on the bias of his previously filed answer, or basis of his previously filed answer.
Thank you.
Quick staff report just on procedure, Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
I wrote this request for council action, and I believe that the proper term probably was that it was, the motion was tabled until tonight. I haven't looked at the, listened to tape or looked at the minutes, which I don't have yet, and I apologize for that. But I will say that the net effect, of course, is the same. It was a substitute motion to table until tonight. And you may be curious whether it's necessary to take a motion to take it off the table. In my opinion, no, because a motion to table to a date certain, you've already decided when it's coming off the table, so you don't need to take any action. A motion simply to table, then it's out there in Never Neverland, and somebody's got to make a motion to bring it off. But here, that's not necessary. And so procedurally, where you are now, that it's back in front of you, is exactly where you were before that substitute motion was made and passed, which was debating Councilmember Duran's motion to direct me to defend count two, the constitutional claim, in the case. And so you can just take up where you left off two weeks ago. I do know there's a half dozen or so people signed up, and you should probably take those comments. Then you can take whatever additional debate on the motion you want, but the motion is now still pending, and it's the motion to direct that the city defend that count two. Okay?
Any questions? Okay, let's go on to public comment then. Well, we haven't got a motion yet. We're going to go to public comment, then we'll have a second.
Yeah, the motion's already pending. No one needs to make a motion because Councilmember Duran made that motion two weeks ago, and it's back.
We've just taken it off where it was, and now we have public comment, then we move on. Charlie Myers?
Thank you. My name is Charlie Myers, M-Y-E-R-S. I live at thirty-six twenty Otis Street in Wheat Ridge. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. On behalf of citizens for an inclusive Wheat Ridge, I am going to read the first part of an amendment to their original filing on case number 2016 CV 340, which outlines why we believe the quadrant lawsuit is unfounded and incorrect in its entirety. My wife, Maureen Daly, will follow me and read the rest of the amendment. The amendment is addressed to the First Judicial District Judge, Hon. Christie Bachmeier. The clause is found in the U.S. Constitution. No ex post facto law shall be passed. Article one, section nine, clause three. Quadrant's lawsuit count two purports that the retroactive wording, or ex post facto, of ballot question three hundred, tax increment financing, TIF reform, is unconstitutional. Count two of the complaint's lawsuit is unfounded and incorrect. The clause refers to the governmental bodies, Congress, state legislatures, city councils, et cetera, passing retroactive or ex post facto criminal or civil laws. The clause does not refer to the electorate, the voters, anywhere in the clause. The voters of Wheat Ridge have superior rights to amend the Wheat Ridge City Charter as a home rule city. Additionally, the passage of TIF reform has not criminally or civilly punished or denied the compliant. The voters did not say no to the complainant with regards to their development project. The voters with the passage of TIF reform added another milestone to the TIF process, which requires a vote of the people on TIFs over $2.5 million. As generally understood, a law that is ex post facto, literally after the fact, is one that criminally punishes conduct that was lawful when it was done. It is an aspect of the fundamental maxim, there can be no punishment without law, in this case, without pre-existing law. Despite the fact that the prohibition against such laws had worked its way into English law, Parliament had nonetheless claimed the right to enact ex post facto laws in the form of bills of attainder against unpopular groups and persons. In addition, prior to the Constitutional Convention, some states themselves had passed In addition, prior to the Constitutional Convention, some states themselves had passed ex post facto laws. Now, Maureen will now read the rest of the amendment. Thank you.
Thanks. My name is Maureen Daly, D.A.L.Y. I live at 3620 Otis Street as well. I'm picking up where Charlie left off, reading the last part of the amendment on behalf of citizens for an inclusive Wheat Ridge. Justice Samuel Chase defined ex post facto laws as: First, every law that makes an action done before the passing of the law and which was innocent, when done, criminal, and punishes such action. Second, every law that aggravates a crime or makes it greater than it was when committed. Third, every law that changes the punishment and inflicts a greater punishment than the law annexed to the crime when committed. Fourth, every law that alters the legal rules of evidence and receives less or different testimony than the law required at the time of the commission of the offense in order to convict the offender. All of these and similar laws are manifestly unjust and oppressive. Again, count two of the complainant's lawsuit is unfounded and incorrect. The clause refers to governmental bodies passing retroactive criminal or civil laws. The clause does not refer to the electorate anywhere in the clause. The voters of Wheat Ridge have superior rights to amend the Wheat Ridge City Charter as a home-rule city. Citizens for an inclusive Wheat Ridge ask, begs, implores, and beseeches the court to rule in favor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge voters on counts one and two. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Aldridge.
I'm Robert Aldridge, A.L.L.D.R.E.D.G.E. Live at 2890 Lamar. And the fact that I was just extending my term on the liquor board has nothing to do with what I'm going to talk about tonight. So that's another issue. I just wanted to speak as a citizen. I know I don't know enough about this whole issue to really make arguments for or against, but it just seems to me that there were three issues: anti-Walmart, TIF approval financing over two and a half million dollars, and the retroactivity of this amendment that clouded most of the citizens' votes for this amendment. Had I been more involved earlier on, I would have had yard signs at my property opposing that amendment. I think it did the citizens of Wheat Ridge a disservice. We are spending thousands of dollars in attorney's fees. We're creating an image with the construction development industry that is not what we want because we need the development in Wheat Ridge. So may not be accurate in all of my statements, but they're my feelings, and I wanted to express that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vivian Voss.
Good evening. Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place. I have been asked to read for Maureen Stork, S.T.O.R.K., 4120 Balsam, as she is out of town. On November 3, 2015, Wheat Ridge voters passed Resolution 300 regarding tax increment financing. Today, in the Wheat Ridge Ordinances, Section 12 dot 10, citizens will find the effective date regarding restrictions on tax incremental financing as follows, I quote: "This amendment will take effect and apply to all actions undertaken by an agency, agent, authority, commission, committee, city council, department, employee, or official of the city of Wheat Ridge subsequent to March 1, 2015, and thereafter," end quote. In Section 4.8, our code reads, and I am quoting again: "Every council member under this charter shall take an oath or affirmation of office that he will support this charter and the ordinances of the city and will faithfully perform the duties of his office upon which he is about to enter," end quote. Wheat Ridge council members are not monarchs nor dictators, but rather representatives elected to serve the will of the people. Monarchs and dictators represent their own wills, assuming they know better than the citizens. Those council members who have directed our city attorney to remain neutral on count two of the quadrant lawsuit have decided that their oath regarding support of city ordinances is irrelevant. I urge them to change their instructions to the city attorney by having him amend the city's response, changing it from a neutral position on count two to one of defense. Such action will reaffirm their oath to support Wheat Ridge ordinances. There are precedental cases in Jefferson County to support a position of retroactivity. A vote to approve the motion amending the Wheat Ridge response defending count two is the legal course of action. And I would take another minute to say that I would concur myself personally with this reading from Mary Ann Stork. And then I thought maybe possibly we should get some definition of what a neutral action actually consists of and how it speaks to this particular situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe at this juncture, we would... I'm sorry, Ms. Calamita, we're not taking... I'm not...
I didn't sign up. I apologize.
I really created a rule at the beginning, and I'm sorry, I have to stay with that rule.
Oh, so you don't take additional...
I'm not... what I stated...
All right, thank you.
Yeah. What I stated was that we weren't going to take extra testimony after the signing, the original signing. So at this point, it's really down to a vote unless counsel would like to have discussion before the vote. Wouldn't that be correct? Yep. You're ready to vote? Ready for the question? Yep, okay. Then, Mr. Matthews.
I appreciate the one gentleman's comments. I think there's a little bit more here at issue two than just 300 by itself, or Walmart, or whether or not we want development. The council's approval rating has been dropping steadily for almost the last 10 years, and the constant complaint I've heard is that we're not listening to the people. And I think 300 was a response to the fact that council in the past has turned a deaf ear to the voters. Council has taken the position of being the experts and telling the voters what is good for them instead of listening to what the voters are telling them to do. And as representative government, we're not here to push our will onto the people. We're here to listen to what the people tell us to do. In the private industry, there are two rules. First rule is, the boss is always right. Second rule is, if the boss is wrong, see Rule 1. And I think the voters have expressed a lot of anger at the fact that they're not being listened to, and they are our bosses. In the real world, they just fire all of us. Well, we didn't all get unre-elected or recalled, but I think that's a bigger issue. And I think the council has to be sensitive to the fact that we've lost credibility with the people who put us here to try and represent them in this dais. We are supposed to be here representing their will, not ours. And I'm afraid that it was... that we've lost sight of that. And you hear people talk about, "Well, I thought we voted on 38th Avenue," and that's a separate issue, but it's, again, the people not thinking that the council's not listening to them. So what they, in effect, did said, "Well, if you're not going to listen to us, we're going to take away some of your authority. And if you don't listen to us more, we'll take away more of your authority." And I think that's the road that we've embarked on with 300. And if we don't change our tune, it's just going to get bloodier. I believe that we are tasked with supporting the charter, but we're also tasked with supporting the will of the people, and they feel that that isn't being done in our town anymore. Thank you.
Ms. Duran?
Thank you, Councilman Matthews. I couldn't have said it better myself. At the last meeting, I stated this is an opportunity for us to show that we are trying to listen to our constituents. We have the Communication Exchange Group that I mentioned that pointed out these 19 different points of communication. We need to utilize those. We need to listen. They're trying to tell us, "Please listen to us." Here what we're saying: act on our behalf. Whether you supported 300 or not, that's not the question. It's up for a judge to decide. We need to support the voters and our citizens in our community. We need to have their backs. It's that simple. And I'm asking if you could please have their back this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Davis?
So I just want to add a couple comments of things that have been discussed, and I know this was a struggle for me at the last meeting because, of course, one of the votes for those of you folks who might not have been a part of that meeting was that we did not, as council, waive our attorney-client privilege. So a lot of the discussions, a lot of the learnings, a lot of our council advice, of course, at this time cannot be shared. And I guess my point is, is, you know, as a councilperson, yes, my responsibility is to act at the will of the people in many ways, both from their voice, both from fiscal responsibility. It's not pushing our own wills or not listening, but there's a whole spectrum of information that we had to gather as council folks to make the decision that we made in that attorney-client conversation. I think the other thing, with that being said, you know, it is for the courts to decide. I think regardless, the judge does have to look at both sides and decide how the law and how it's represented within the law and how this claim falls within the law, and it is for the judge to decide. So I know in one count, the council staying, remaining neutral, and the other count, we are defending it, and either way, in both situations, it is the judge's responsibility to look at both sides and look at the law and make a decision from there. So I just wanted to add that as well, that there is a lot of things that factor in this when we make our decisions.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor.
Please cast your vote.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize...
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thought he was lying his vote.
I am, but I'm going to speak first. I think this is the sixth time now that we have discussed this. We had an executive session duly constituted under the laws of the state of Colorado. We... all of us were there. All of us discussed this issue. All of us took advice from counsel. And as... on the basis of that, we gave our attorney... or our attorney came to understand what our will was. Later, you brought up an issue in which you wanted us to do away with our right to attorney-client privilege. We discussed that, had a long discussion about that, and we decided not to do it in public vote. So then you brought it up again with a motion to... to... well, with another motion... oh, yeah, that's right, about the lawsuit. And another time, count one, and now we're talking about count two, or vice versa. So that's at least six times. This is all a done deal already. We've already given our attorney instructions. You yourself, last time, pointed out that this was immaterial now, that it makes no sense for us now to change our stance, our case. I'm not exactly sure why we're doing this, why we're going through this another time, over and over again. I'm proud of the way I feel about this. I wrote something in the Gazette this month about that, about the way I feel. My personal feeling is, I'm not a lawyer, but my personal feeling is, this is unconstitutional. Our first oath when we took office was to support the Constitution of the United States. I am supporting the Constitution of the United States. So I will vote no on this.
Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd just like to commend Monica for her efforts to try to be diligent about how she's sort of navigating these waters as respects to the attorney-client privilege and checking with the city attorney as she goes along with this, because it's not easy to try to voice this dissenting opinion while still trying to remain true to our attorney-client privilege, and I don't want to in any way break that. So I appreciate your efforts in trying to voice these concerns while still remaining true to the attorney-client privilege. I appreciate that. Going to the specific motion that's being presented, which is to move to direct the city attorney to defend count two, the constitutional claim in quadrant litigation. In my mind, it would be better for the city to defend itself and to present as strong an argument as it can, knowing that it is the judge's decision, but it is our opportunity and our right to present the best case forward, and doing that in a way that gives us the best shot at navigating our own future as we go through this. There's other developments, other groups that may want to come to the city of Wheat Ridge, and by not fully defending this, we're not giving ourselves a chance to navigate our own path through this. And so that's my main concern. That's why I'll be voting for this measure, because in my mind, it's better to defend both counts and have the judge tell us where we stand, because that is his job. But when I look at our job, it's to say, give us the best defense we can muster, and if that is not successful, I'm willing to take it where it stands, because that's what the judge's job is to do. So I'll be supporting this effort in large part because I believe that it's something that if we're not presenting a full defense, that we're not giving ourselves the best chance to move forward on this issue. So, thank you.
Mr. Matthews, that's your second time?
Yes. One other reason I would like to see is to defend this vigorously is I'm just dying to see what would come out in discovery. And ballot issue 300 was passed along on the dais before the agreement was made to... by the council to sign the contract going forward. Council was given advance notice that this was coming, and I certainly know there were hundreds, if not thousands, of signs out on the street. But I would like to see, you know, how... unless we defend this, I don't know how we see how the developer reacted. And he had the foreknowledge that he was certainly taking some risk at moving forward at that point. Unless we defend this, I don't know how, you know, how the discovery process goes out, but I agree that we have to defend this fully. And I just don't see that we have another choice. Thank you.
Monica?
You know, one more thing, Councilman Fitzgerald. We also took an oath to hold our charter and our ordinances, and if it would have taken me 10 or 20 times to ask you to do that, I would have done it. The bottom line is, the citizens drove this charter because they felt they weren't being listened to by their constituents. It goes way even past 2B. This is what they wanted. This is what passed. This is what our obligation is, is to defend it, let a judge decide, and whatever decision the judge makes, we have to live with. But at least to let our citizens know... But at least to let our citizens know that, you know what, as a council, as your elected officials that put us here, we have your back. We're going to support you on this. This is the right thing to do. So obviously, I'm going to be supporting amending this. And I hope all of you really look at your conscience and really consider, regardless of what was discussed in executive session, pros, cons, whatever, the bottom line is, this was passed by the voters, and this is our obligation, and this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Ms. Wood?
I'd just like to ask the city attorney if, because the question was asked by a citizen, on the neutral stance, if it, you probably can't give details, but could you just give a general explanation of what a neutral stance is?
Sure. As translated to Count Two of the case, which is the only place there is a, directed to make a neutral stance, that really means that you respond to, at least at this point, the complaint. There are probably ten allegations in the complaint that we're in support of, pardon me, of Count Two. And in most cases, we were able to say, or I was able to say, that, and you often do this if it's the truth, that you're, with regard to some of those allegations, you don't have sufficient information to form an opinion as to those allegations. And then we added in a number of places, because it was very consistent with the direction given by council, except that defendant, in this case, the city, takes no position as to whether ballot question 300 is unconstitutionally retrospective. So it was important to me, given the direction I was given, to say that to the judge. And that's the way in which I articulated that position. I think that's the right way to articulate it. You're not saying, say yes, say no. We take no position as to whether ballot question 300 is unconstitutionally retrospective. Claim number two in the case basically says that it is, so unconstitutionally retrospective. And so the city's taking no position, which is consistent with the direction, at least until now, that I've been given. That's how you articulate it, and that's how we have so far in the case. It's the only pleading the city's had to file, is the answer.
Thank you.
You know, I'd like to say something. I'm a little, I'm angry that our council here is being pressured into decisions based on political, that we're not listening, that they're not paying attention, et cetera, et cetera. Because this council up here has got a lot of information, has worked very hard at these decisions. They're not wanting to oppose it. They're wanting to just remain neutral. That's what I hear from them. It may or may not be the right, but this is the kind of dissension that continues with our city. And that is the kind of dissension that, if you keep it up here at the top, it's going to keep it up below, meaning the divisiveness that this type of action continually causes is not good for our city, is not good for the developers that would like to work with us. And I would really like the council to perhaps cast your votes and, you know, let the wind go, the way it blows. But let's stop beating up on each other about it. That's really unkind to me. Are we ready? Ready to cast your votes?
Can I make my motion? Do I need to remake the motion?
I don't think you need a motion.
No?
No.
For clarity, it is the motion that was made two weeks ago, which is to direct the city attorney to defend Count Two, the constitutional claim in the quadrant litigation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motion fails.
Excuse me. Motion fails three to five with council members Woodden, Fitzgerald, Davis, Pond, and Hoppy voting no.
Thank you. That really concludes the business portion of our meeting. We've gone on to some discussion items, starting with self-storage developments. We have a staff report on that.
So this is somewhat of a new topic for staff and city council. It's in reaction, really, to just some trends that we're seeing out in the real estate market and some pending applications that we've had over the course of the last about twelve months. It's regarding self-storage facilities, and we're really just looking to kind of start the discussion and get initial direction from city council on this topic this evening, understanding that more detailed direction from council would be needed to actually begin crafting an ordinance, if that's your direction. And certainly, there's a do-nothing action item at the end of the agenda here as well. So we're not, we're not trying to drive an agenda here, but just wanted to bring the topic to your attention. So over the past year, as I mentioned, we've really entertained three development applications for self-storage facilities. Different types of applications. One has already been approved for rezoning on Marshall Street, and they're moving forward with building permits and final approvals to actually start construction on that self-storage facility. There's two other pending applications. One is a rezoning application that'll be in front of city council in the future. One is a planned development application that will make its final stop at the planning commission. All those are quasi-judicial applications, so we don't want to get mired in the details of those, which would be inappropriate tonight, but just wanted to make you aware that's kind of the context of why we're in front of you to talk about this. There is one other preliminary application that's been filed for another site in the city as well. So a total of four of these self-storage facilities over the past year. So given what seemed like a trend and perhaps an increase in market demand for this type of a facility, we wanted to get in front of council and just see your thoughts on a few different policy questions as to what you think about that trend in Wheat Ridge. But first, perhaps some background on what these self-storage facilities are. There's certainly nothing new. They're a product that's been around for certainly decades. I think you've seen more of them over the last maybe twenty years than prior to that, but it's not a new development concept. You see them all over the metro area and all over the country. There's two basic models in self-storage, where people, clients, come and rent a unit to store some amount of their stuff, right? There's really, the one model is typically multi-story. It's typically climate-controlled. The types of clients that you see in that are often business folks, maybe storing records or supplies. I don't want to speak for Jerry, but, you know, attorneys that need to keep files for a long time, medical offices that need to keep files for a long time, sometimes use these facilities as an excess, more cost-effective storage device than, you know, renting office space for that purpose. And the other kind of equally common, maybe even more common, model is the single-story model, typically with a garage door on the front, ranging in size from, you know, five by eight to much larger than that, where people are just more likely to be storing their personal items, whether that be sports items or collections, or it runs the gamut, I'm sure. In a certain sense, they can be considered a fairly benign land use, not necessarily a lot of traffic impacts, though some of that traffic, depending on how you regulate them, can occur at odd hours or off-hours, just given when people have access to these. We've looked in with our police department at our crime data and for the existing facilities, and we only have a couple in Wheat Ridge right now, but we don't see any crime trends associated with them, again, at least at the Wheat Ridge facilities. They don't necessarily have a high demand on city services or utility services. They can generally be designed to be kind of architecturally compatible and, you know, reasonably attractive in terms of how they're designed. And they do meet a demand of residents and business owners who, you know, need or want these facilities that are some of your constituents. So we certainly acknowledge that. That said, there are some potential kind of bigger picture implications in terms of if there were more of a proliferation of these land use applications. They tend to locate on, you know, not the highest cost of real estate, so often industrial land or kind of second-tier commercial land. Just, that's the kind of land price that I think makes the economics of these work for them as a business model. For the city of Wheat Ridge, that means they take up often some of our land that's owned industrial employment. And generally, our comprehensive planning documents and our envisioned Wheat Ridge comp plan from 2009 recommends that we try and attract and encourage employment-based land uses on some of those industrial and employment-based lands that are normally on the north side of I-70. And that's where we're seeing at least two of those pending applications that I mentioned early. So they can eat up some of the larger parcels, as I'm sure all of you are aware, we're landlocked and don't necessarily have a lot of vacant land. So some concern that just we're potentially eating up land that could be put to a higher and better use, or a use that would generate more revenue for the city and meet some of those goals in terms of attracting jobs to the city. So that's kind of the background on where we're at. We're certainly aware that other jurisdictions in the metro area and elsewhere have chosen to regulate this type of a land use in specific ways that are unique to this specific land use application. What that typically looks like is a few different ways that you can do that. You could limit or restrict the range of zoning districts that they're permissible in. You could make a, create a regulatory approval process that looks at them in a special way. You're probably all aware that we have both special-use permits and in our mixed-use zoning districts, conditional-use permits that give the staff, or in some cases, city council, the ability to look a little more carefully at a particular use, to see if there's specific issues to that use that need to be treated a little bit differently or regulated a little bit differently. So those are some options in terms of just process of how and where these are authorized and what the approval process looks like for them to get approved. Another way that cities consider regulating this type of a land use, given the type of structures that they are, they kind of range in terms of their attractiveness, so you can really kind of try and ramp up the architectural requirements, landscape requirements, so that they really fit in their context of where they're going, if it's adjacent to residential or whatever that context may be, kind of ensure that they're the highest quality possible. And a third way that I think cities sometimes choose to regulate these uses is through their operational characteristics, possibly limiting hours of operation, you know, possibly requiring onsite management, other kind of specifics in terms of access and circulation and how they just function to work effectively in our community. So we're just trying to kind of perhaps set the stage for a preliminary discussion on this topic, looking to get some policy direction from council on this. Is this of concern to you? Is it not of particular concern, but you'd like to make sure that we're getting good quality architecture? You know, would you like to consider a regulatory process that would give us a little more discretion in terms of what are appropriate locations for them? We haven't taken the liberty to kind of get ahead of ourselves, so we haven't really fleshed those out fully in terms of what might work for us. So we'd want to kind of get back with you on some recommendations on that, if, to some extent, you think this is of concern at a policy level. If you don't, then we'll go quietly away and move on with many other ordinances that we're working on. So that's my introduction.
Mr. Johnstone, I think what I'm hearing is that, first, we need to make some determination. The council needs to make determination as to continue the addition of the storage units. And then if they do decide to do that, to go on with controlling our particular standards or the structures themselves.
I think that's well-stated, Madam Jay. The threshold question, is this of some concern that these are taking up, you know, land in the city for a specific use that, you know, doesn't generate a whole lot of economic benefit? Still meets a market need. I mean, people use these things, so I'm not trying to diminish the importance of that in the market. We don't often, you know, regulate the market or choose not to and just let it do its thing. But in some cases, we choose to, you know, intervene. I think by way of example, in our mixed-use zoning districts, the issue of drive-throughs came up, right? And we said, well, drive-throughs are okay, but we wouldn't necessarily want them to be the only land use in the city, so we limit, we create some separation requirements. We recently had a discussion about marijuana uses, and we decided to say, you know, we want them in the city, we allow them in the city, but we probably only need so many. That's probably, you know, what we need for this city to meet the market demands for our community. So it's certainly not without precedent to look at a particular land use and say we want to regulate it in some additional fashion. If you're inclined to continue to allow them fairly permissively, yes, then we could go down the road of looking at architectural requirements, looking at operational requirements that just ensure that they're operated appropriately and designed appropriately.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Pond, we'd like to ask some questions.
Yeah, I'm pulling up the comprehensive plan on our beautiful new website. Thank you. But it took a little bit of time. So I still have, I have a little bit of a question, perhaps, just kind of going back about the industrial employment designation as a land use. And if you, if anyone is present here who recalls kind of some of the conversations about the construction of that as a use, and whether or not, in fact, during those discussions, there was any concepts of trying to subdivide it any further or create any other distinctions that would create any more specific subsections of industrial use.
So in the comprehensive plan, we, again, the purple shade of there is, if you look at the structure plan, are generally encouraged to be employment, industrial unemployment uses. And then there were further kind of policy recommendations in the comprehensive plan that recommended that we update our industrial zoning district to be an industrial employment zoning district, and just update it in terms of what are the appropriate uses. We eliminated some of the just outdated uses that we felt no longer really, really just existed or were appropriate. We got rid of some of the heavier industrial uses and made sure that we were allowing some of those office flex types of uses. We also incorporated an industrial employment section into the architectural and site design manual within the last several years. And really, the intent of that was to strike a balance between allowing, making sure that we're getting quality industrial buildings, but not holding them to the same standard that we would for retail buildings. So we were trying to make a reasonable distinction there. One of the, kind of unintended consequences of that was that those architectural and site design manuals standards don't apply well, in my opinion at least, to self-storage facilities. They're designed so that the, if you're a certain distance from street or public view, the architectural requirements are reduced. And that works for typical industrial buildings, but for these buildings, where they take up a big footprint of the site and they're throughout the site, there's really probably more appropriate to have kind of standard design for all of the structures as opposed to just addressing certain facades that are visible from the street. So that's kind of what we've done in terms of regulatory environments, to attempt to implement the recommendations from the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that explanation. With that said, you know, my general feeling is that the kind of work that was done on the comp plan saw a need or a trend in the industrial employment zone and how they were setting that up, much of which you've explained. Because of that, I generally feel that it's worthwhile for us to continue to talk about this and perhaps look at additional thresholds to allow us to not completely restrict this, because I'm not sure that that's appropriate, however, to provide some opportunities to make sure that we're honoring the intent of the comprehensive plan, actually making the right choices, whether that's through administrative means, planning commission, or city council. So I don't think we're going to solve that tonight, so, but I think based on what you've presented, it'd be my desire would be to, you know, to continue to talk about it and find out what some of those options are, like special use, et cetera.
Mr. Matthews?
As I was thinking about this and also what you were saying there about limiting their use too, I would be more in favor towards leaning to strict architectural standards, something that A, is attractive, and B, you know, like brick, actual brick building instead of tin walls, that type of thing. So A, they have a substantial investment, which would make them look into the long term, and B, they would naturally stay attractive. And, you know, if we don't allow some of the cheaper construction as far as proliferating, you know, that may help. You know, if we're demanding high standards, we may not get as many applicants trying to use a piece of land. They're going to have to make a good use of their land. And through the architectural standards, that may be self-limiting, you know, of and by itself, but yet it preserves. standards, that may be self-limiting, you know, of and by itself, but yet it preserves the look that we're, that we're trying to put out there for people that drive by. It doesn't look like a dump, or, you know, an old used car lot.
Ms. Davis. So I would mirror what Mr. Pon had said, in that I would support looking into some possibilities of how we can manage this. I do also think that you use a good example as far as when we handle the marijuana establishments, and how many do we need in our city. I don't think that's such a bad thing here, you know, to make sure that we have this that supports our city, but we don't need to become the storage area for the west metro area type of situation. And I do think, also discussing that this is happening north of I-70, we also have a lot of growth opportunity with the gold line, and I would hate to all of a sudden have, you know, four storage spaces go up there, rather than some mixed-use types of buildings and properties and development go up there. So I would also support looking into it further, to see if we can set some criteria, if it be through building design, numbers of units within our city that's reasonable, or all of the above.
Ms. Wood.
I don't know that I'm going to say anything drastically different, but since we do not have a lot of extra land in our city, and we don't have an outer edge to our city where we can continue to develop, and we're landlocked, I think it's important for us to really look at the uses that are going to happen within our city. I'm not against these, but I would want regulatory actions put in place so that we don't have too many go into place. And I do support more industrial uses that favor employment, so employee, employment industrial uses, so we can keep creating jobs on the land that we do have, and that I also support stronger architectural guidelines, so that the product that does go in is quality, and that we have a mix of not only quality storage that people are going to want and need, but we also have employment-based use of land that's going to benefit our city. So I, not against it, but I do want us to go forward looking at it with a somewhat of a regulatory stance.
Do we have an idea of how many storage units we have right now?
Two projects.
There's two existing. There's two existing.
One on 44th, and one just north of I-70 on Marshall Road.
Okay, okay. I mean, was it? Well, I would support having this discussion, and kind of talking about the architecture, maybe limiting it also, like everyone else suggests, and just making sure that we're smart about it, and we utilize the land that we have for revenue and employment, more so than just storage. So I do support having a further discussion on this.
Ms. Davis again. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Did I have someone? Yeah, I hadn't spoke yet. Mr. Urban.
Thank you. I would be in favor of allowing self-storage facilities to continue to operate within the city, obviously, if there's new applicants. I think that we can work with them to have good operational guidelines and standards. I don't want it to be overly burdensome for them, although I think that there's some basic operational standards we can put in place. And as it relates to the architectural elements, I think it's appropriate for the street-facing elements of a development to be more robust or improved, as opposed to the inner workings. And so, as long as it's not too onerous, I'm okay with coming up with some basic guidelines. But I think that in the long term, a self-storage use of a property is sort of a placeholder for something else down the road, and it doesn't necessarily impact the property so much as some other type of use might be. So it would give us sort of that leeway down the road to make use of that property for something else. And so, that, I think, is one upside of the self-storage type setup, is that it does kind of make a minimal impact on the property that can, maybe can be retrofitted or redesigned down, or redeveloped down the road. So, thank you.
Ms. Davis.
I would like to, turn on my mic, make a consensus that Mr. Johnstone work on some of the items we discussed, as far as plans, some regulatory plans, seeing, you know, what are, what your recommendations would be based on other cities, and bring it back to council.
I believe we have a consensus. Please raise your hands. That'd be great. Okay. Is that enough marching orders for you?
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the, I believe, snow removal policy.
Okay, yes, Your Honor members of the council. Unlike the previous item, this is not a new item, talking about snow removal. It's been brought before the council in the past. The memo that you have in front of you kind of goes into our snow removal policy in general. The way we operate in Wheat Ridge is pretty similar to other cities, as far as how we prioritize our streets. And then, I think what prompted this is, you know, sidewalks, especially back in December, even January, where we had some heavier snowfalls. And those times of year are tougher too, because the sun isn't as high in the sky, and we don't get in the melting action. But the Public Works Department, and I think you folks on the council too, get a lot of complaints, mostly sidewalks. We do get some on the streets, but it seems like the lion's share is regarding sidewalk snow not getting removed, which is kind of the main meat of the memo here, and I think the topic for discussion. I'll just kind of walk through it briefly, how we do it in regards to sidewalks. The city's policy is that the adjacent homeowners maintain their walks. This is pretty typical of other cities. The only difference with Wheat Ridge here is we don't have anything in our code that allows us to enforce it, which I think is a source of frustration for a lot of residents. The city does maintain some sidewalks, you know, similar to other cities, there may be regional trails, bridges, places where you just don't expect private property owners to get out and do it. The city does maintain those. We've kind of thrown some options in here for the council to discuss, chew on a little bit. You know, one is, you know, put something in our code, an ordinance in place that allows us to enforce it. Another option is in the higher-traffic areas, maybe the business areas, there's a couple of different options there. City could potentially put more resources into that, whether it's through the Public Works Department or contract services. You know, focus on some of these higher-traffic areas, maybe near bus stops, where we get, tend to get a little more complaints. Special service districts is another way some cities handle these types of issues, you know, where the, kind of similar to a homeowners' association, where the property owners there actually pay a fee, and it may go into other things besides snow removal as well. So there's some different options here. You know, we could act, you could decide to do any of these, or nothing, or direct staff to get more information, we could certainly do that. But it seems to vary, you know, from winter to winter. If we have a mild winter, this typically is not an issue. You know, a heavier winter with lots of snowfall becomes a big issue. So just open it up for discussion, and see where we go from here.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I would support putting into code the requirement that citizens shovel their walks. Citizens shovel their own walks, yes. And I, there are cases, I think we've talked about some, there are bus stops that are in the shadows that we need to shovel, probably because it's really sort of on the other side of the fence from the homeowner. So I think we ought to put some more money into shoveling sidewalks on major thoroughfares that are really more public walks than they are private sidewalks, and also, we ought to think about bus stops.
And maybe, to add to that real quick too, that's, some of, a lot of the complaints we do get are on the major corridors, because that's where we're plowing with our snow trucks, snow plows, and it plows up quite a bit of snow on the sidewalk. And I get it, I would be upset if I just scooped it, and then the city comes along, but we don't typically get into the residential neighborhoods where there is sidewalks, and so we're not causing that accumulation of snow on sidewalks. But the major corridors, that might be something we should look up.
I think you and I have talked about it before, but there's a bus stop on 38th and Holland, where we scrape the street and put snow into the bus stop, then the homeowner comes around and works, and gets all the ice out, and then we do it again.
Yeah.
Oh, I've got a bunch of them. Ms. Hoppy.
Great, thank you. So I would be in support of adopting an ordinance for requiring a snow removal from property owners, so that would be both commercial and residential. And then I would also be in support, if we could find and identify some of those areas that are kind of like abandoned, no one's taking claim to, like along 44th Avenue, between, like Dover to just over the bridge, people actually have to come out around the block to shove that sidewalk, to shovel that sidewalk, so, because it's behind their house and behind their backyard fence. So I don't necessarily think that that's a good expectation, to expect them to do that, while they're probably already doing the sidewalk in front of their house too. There's some, you know, some other places, like on Wadsworth on the west side, between like 47th and Red Lobster, people tend to walk in the street into uncoming, into coming on traffic, to be able to get through that snow. And so I think areas like that, that we should attempt to identify those areas, and take care of those areas, and when it's a certain amount of snow. There is, along 32nd Avenue, Lakewood actually ran their truck up the sidewalk, on the south side of that sidewalk, after the big snow, and they literally stopped right across the street, like you could see where Lakewood and Wheat Ridge ended. And so, that's something we should maybe consider too, around schools, there's safety issues, there's a lot of students who are walking to the high schools and the middle schools that don't have, they're walking in the street, they don't have safe passage to school because of the snow issues. So I would support all of those. And then as far as the one with the, you know, working with business owners, and, you know, getting special district areas for the business owners to maybe share the expense of the removal. I think if we do look at that, it should be something where it's on a volunteer-type basis, where we could, the contractor could have the ability to be able to skip a property if necessary. There are some properties I know on like 38th, where they already have, the lanes already has their own truck, Crest Kitchen and Bath already has their own truck, A1 already has their own truck, so Compass Construction has their own truck. So although I would be okay with paying somebody, so we didn't have to. But like, you know, but then there's other property owners who may not have the option, or may already be paying somebody else, so we'll have three or four different trucks in the area shoveling. So if we look at that, I would just like it to be flexible enough to reach those needs.
Someone else? Wait, I can't remember. I think, I think so.
You know, I guess I would, I would look at commercial places of business and those types of corridors, before I would look at residential requirements regarding snow removal, if only from an enforcement perspective, because you'd almost have to beat the sun in order to issue the tickets. And so it's more of an enforcement issue for me, is to, how do we go about even considering or contemplating enforcing this? I'd like to reach out to the businesses first, and encourage them to remove the snow where possible, and encourage our residents to do the same, but I'd be reluctant to develop any kind of ordinance that would require residents to remove the snow. While we want to encourage them to do that, it's another step to make that sort of an unenforceable ordinance.
Donna, this end.
I do support some type of code or ordinance for removing snow from your sidewalk. I know many metropolitan cities already have a general rule that says, within 24 hours, to shovel the walk where the public, shovel the sidewalk in front of your home where the public walks. And I do support that, not because it's something that we want to have our code on top of and enforce, but it's more of just a general notice to our citizens that you have 24 hours to shovel your walk. And when I heard citizens complain about this, they were saying, you know, why aren't some people doing it? And some people may not be doing it because there isn't an ordinance. So if we just make an ordinance, let people know it's out there, and it's not to give citations out, but if there's continued problems in certain areas, where you might have a lot of kids walking, it could be a safety issue. And we don't have to do fines or anything, we could do warnings, and just let people know that this is an ordinance. And that was what I had heard from residents, is they were just curious, do we have an ordinance in Wheat Ridge? And we currently don't, really. So I would support putting an ordinance in place, 24 hours, shovel the walk that's public in front of your home, and it's more of a safety thing for all of us.
Mr. Matthews.
I'm pretty fortunate, because on our street, the neighbors all kind of look after each other, and someone's out on vacation, and it snows, well, at least their sidewalk, even if, a lot of times their driveway, just so it's not an obvious thing, if the people aren't home, they'll go to the neighbors. So we have a great bunch of people in my neighborhood. One thing I would request, if we're going to start doing this on a commercial basis, and start creating a cottage industry, I would like to see anything that comes forward to have an accompanying budget. And I think we have to know how much it's going to cost, and how we're going to handle that, because that's one of those things that can snowball on you, and you start out thinking it's $50,000 a year, and it turns out into $300,000. So I think we have to be cost-conscious, work towards a lot of education, towards getting people to do it. Most of the complaints I hear about are more the commercial areas, where people are out and around, and trying to get to the bus stops, or, you know, like in front of downtown Wheat Ridge.
Yeah.
But if we're going to do something, I don't know how it's going to work, you'll have to work that out, because who's going to keep track when this contractor sends his guys out in the middle of the night to start plowing a sidewalk? Well, you do this one, then you pick it up over here, and then you drop the blade again over here, and, you know, there could be some nightmarish issues if we're not consistent. And then also establishes, Christie was just saying, well, if it's a half inch, an inch, when do we start enforcing and go to town?
Exactly. There's definitely going to be, I'm sorry, Monica, there's definitely going to be a cost to this, and we didn't want to bring any numbers yet, because we wanted to get further direction, because it's all going to depend on what you want to do, and at what level, is it after four inches, six inches? Some areas of town, and we do have some numbers, our staff does, some areas of the city, and we've broken down those costs of what that costs, and we do have a contract that, contractor that does some parts of the city. But there's some areas of the city where there's stamped concrete, or some type of stone that, you know, you can't use a plow, it has to be done by hand, so it all depends on a lot of those factors. So we'll definitely have to look into the cost, and if we get some further direction.
I've got one, Christie has been.
So I just kind of want to mirror what's been said. I do think that it should be for businesses and residents. I'm fortunate as well, and I, that I have good neighbors, and I am a good neighbor with a snow blower, so I try and get folks that, except now I'm wounded, folks that are older, that struggle, and so I think as a community, it would just support us all to help one another even more if we all knew there was an ordinance. And I also, I think it's a slippery slope to kind of pick major corridors, but I agree with Ms. Hoppy about there are some goofy places that, like, no one really owns a sidewalk, you know, like the homes, you know, 44th between Dudley, Dover, Estes, right there is a perfect example of hard for the homeowners to jump their fence and do that. So I think it's tough with the businesses, because I think we're going to kind of perhaps run into the haves and have-nots again. You know, for instance, why are we shoveling 44th and not 38th, or whatever might, what story somebody might make up. So, and also, from a neighborhood that has a school, our area does get plowed by the city, and I actually do have neighbors that go out and replow the sidewalk after the plow has pushed it, because we know kids. So, I mean, some of it's the nature of the beast, it doesn't ever happen that often, that the snow is so thick, but it is kind of the nature of the beast, that sometimes you might have to go out there twice. But I do feel that there needs to be 24 hours, I think Edgewater has that, and just more, you know, maybe we could start out as, you know, not a fine thing, but a warning, and those types of things, just to get folks in sync. And I also think we have had, I mean, with the weather, it was interesting, because I've had like myself, who slipped on ice, and several neighbors who have done the same and hurt themselves. So it is an issue. So it is an issue, even in the neighborhood. So I would support some kind of more defined ordinance.
Mr. Ren, and then Mr. Pond.
I was going to say, most of the calls I get are from the snow not being cleared in commercial areas, but also in, on rental property. Some of the rental places, the property owners are not removing the snow, you know, so I don't know how we can address that for apartment buildings and that. So I would support an ordinance. I would like to look at different options as far as like the 24-hour notice and, you know, if it snows more than three inches, four inches, have some guidelines there and maybe, maybe get some input, too, from our citizens as to what, I mean, I'm getting input with phone calls as to them not being able to either get out of their rental area because it's not shoveled or just, you know, bus stops, things like that. One question I had, at one time, wasn't there a smaller truck that kind of came through with the plow after the big trucks came through? Was it outsourced?
We did. We had, I believe it was an employee back in the early 2000s, we would, we had more resources at that time, more employees in the Parks Department and Public Works. We were able to, I think, I'm not sure exactly which corridors they did, but I think it was some of the major.
I think it was all the rightaways.
Yeah, and did some of the sidewalks. That was, that was cut during the budget cuts back in 2002, '03, I think, when we laid off 35 employees.
So is there any way to kind of, when we re-discuss this, kind of put that into the plan with the cost as to what that would be?
Yeah, I think everything should be on the table.
Okay.
If we can, if we can pick it up with current staffing or outsourced or whatever makes sense, I think, for different areas of the city. You know, I'm not sure if you're suggesting we hire additional staff to do it, or we'd rather contract out and do what we can with our current staff and contract out the rest, or we can look at a mixture.
Well, don't we have current staff that take care of all the weeds and stuff and the rightaways that kind of go through and pull all those during the summer months and fall?
Excuse me. Many of those employees are seasonal, who do the landscape beds and such, so they're not here during the winter. So it's mainly our full-time Parks and Public Works staff that, but they're responsible for the government facilities, buildings, and sometimes you have to come back to City Hall three or four times, and the Rec Center three or four times during a major snowstorm. They don't have a lot of extra time to go out and do extra other areas of the city.
Okay. If we could look at that, too, while we're putting it all together. Thank you.
Mr. Goff, wasn't there a plan to also take care of the mayor's property?
Number one.
I just wanted to make sure that you hadn't forgotten that. Mr. Pond.
This has been a good discussion. I think that, but what I've gotten out of it is that it's very complicated. There's a lot of things going on. I just want to touch on a, I, as I sit right now, I don't know if I support an ordinance or not. And so I would need more conversation. I'd need some more study session work. I agree with Councilmember Duran that we really should get input, and I think we have to be very careful about how we get that input, whether it's from businesses, residents, landlords, everyone, because I think that unless we can kind of try to find a way to strike the right balance and try to find the compliance that we're really looking for, we may just do a lot of work and not really get the results that we're looking for. And that's one of my, one of my concerns. I think some of the things that have been issued, that have been talked about are issues in, right and around my area. Certainly plow issues. I mean, there's some folks that are on Thirty-second Avenue that if we put an ordinance in force that said you have to shovel the walk, I don't know how they would do it. It's on the side of their house. It's, not only is it in an awkward location from a standpoint of being on the side of the house, but I don't know how physically in some of these storms, they could actually go out and remove the, what has been plowed up onto the side of the street. And, you know, I know it's an issue. I go, I wait for the bus in one of those locations, and I have to kind of, you know, stand in the street sometimes. So it's not that I'm not sensitive to what the issue is. However, I don't know exactly how you, you know, you get what you want out of it, which is a clean sidewalk, because in some of those cases, the sheer weight of material being pushed on that sidewalk is not something that I think is going to be fairly addressed by a single resident. You know, I think when we bring people in to talk about it also, and this is the case in my neighborhood, there's a lot of, there's maybe equally or more houses that don't have sidewalks than do have sidewalks, and a lot of sidewalks that are connected to nothing. And I think that makes for, you know, equity issues as we look at this moving forward. And I think we need to kind of understand that, because are we creating something that's going to, again, accomplish what we want, or is it going to create other issues? For that reason, I think I align myself more with Councilmember Urban, which is, you know, let's look at some of the businesses first, and you may not have said, commercial or, you know, I mean, commercial corridors, businesses, main quarters. I would go there first as well. You know, I think what I heard you say is that some of the enforcement issues may be problematic. I agree with that. And I absolutely agree with Mr. Matthews' comment about the money, and I'll just extend that, and this will be my last comment, which is to say that when you really get into this, I don't, I mean, I think, I think we absolutely should look at the money, but I think this is, I think this is as expensive as it is complicated. Again, not a reason not to do it, but, you know, we live, you know, it's a real thing that 35 jobs, you know, were lost to the city in 2002, and they have not been gained back. You know, I mean, if we were in a different position where we were flush with cash and flush with people, and maybe we can get, maybe we can get back to that through this discussion, I don't know. But that's, that's a real thing, that many staff FTEs are not here in this millennium. So, thanks.
Mr. Urban.
As we look at doing any kind of specific ordinance, there's three things that I'd like to at least consider in that. The first being the development of some kind of an award or recognition program for businesses that are able to do a good job in snow removal, where residents can nominate a business that's done a good job over time. And removing the snow is sort of a promotion and encouragement of good behavior and recognizing those businesses that take that extra effort to make sure that they're accessible to all. And we can work with the Active Transportation Committee to develop some kind of an award for those businesses that are participating. The second thing is that we need to encourage the development of some, or the expansion of the Snow Buddies Program through the Volunteers of America or other groups, so that we're encouraging residents to help volunteer for those that just physically are unable to remove the snow on their own due to health or financial or otherwise, just not able to muster up the energy to do that. So we want to make sure that if we're going to enforce something like that, that we have the means sort of surrounding that to kind of keep it together and encouraging residents to kind of watch out for each other. And then the third thing is that if we're going to do this, there needs to be a way for residents to report either online or via a hotline to complain or to say that this particular property is not in accordance with the ordinance. So there's some sort of streamlined way to kind of knock those out and provide some kind of complaint line or something. So that would be my recommendation.
I think, I think what we're hearing is, there seems to be a lot of affirmative as far as an ordinance is concerned. Might be division between commercial and residential, so some details about that, as well as a high desire to have a cost structure if the city then participates in some of this snow removal on either business, I think businesses mostly, or certain streets or something like that. But I think a variety of packages that way. Do I have it all?
Yeah.
And I think that would be pretty close to the consensus.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just because I know kind of how our agendas line out, at least for the next few weeks, it, I would just kind of want to say that I'm not, that I think we're going to, we should spend appropriate time on this, and unfortunately, I'm not sure that that time is going to capture this snow season. It's more likely to capture the next snow season, and that should be, that should be our goal. I just want to say that out loud so that there isn't any, anyone watching at home thinking there's going to be a plow coming down tomorrow morning.
It's snowing tonight, it's supposed to.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll work on that and get something scheduled for a future study session.
Our last item for discussion is the village proposed streetscape improvements. Once again, Mr. Brink.
Okay, I can use the overhead, show some pictures and the plans if that would help. I don't recall how, if the photos turned out in your agenda packet very well, but I can walk through that.
You guys have the photos?
Yeah, they're in there.
They have them. Scott, I think it's fine. Yep.
So, yeah, just to kind of sum this up a little bit, we had a proposal planned from the owner of the Kipling Village Apartments there along Kipling. This is regarding these decorative, I'll call them stone retaining walls that we have along Kipling, and also a ton of other places in the city, along Harland Street from about, oh, I-70 up to Thirty-eighth, around Twenty-ninth Avenue we have some, and then also on Thirty-eighth. These particular ones along Kipling, they're, you know, falling into disrepair, kind of deteriorating. They're, they're in a position where cars have backed into them a lot from the parking lot. The property owner came in with a landscaping plan to really spruce up the property, but it would involve taking these out and putting in trees, shrubs, plantings, and that, but then also some, kind of something similar, some decorative stone pillars with some iron gates, fences, I guess is the right word, that would really spruce it up and look more attractive. The reason we wanted to bring this in front of the council is these walls, not just here but citywide, were put in, you know, some time ago, early 2000s, at, you know, pretty fair expense. And how council feels about, you know, removing these, or are they sacred? Should we be retaining these and keeping these in place? So I think the Kipling Village request to remove them is a more urgent thing, but, you know, longer-term discussion on these walls in general might be warranted as far as, you know, properly maintaining them, you know, putting the funds in place. We have done some maintenance on those, but mainly it's when they really, you know, are suffering some bad damage, like some of these ones on Harland, just, you know, it obviously gotten hit by cars and knocked over, and we put them back up, but just, they're just aging and deteriorating. So long-term, do we really want to try and keep these up or maintain some flexibility? Just going to open that up for discussion here.
And just to add to that, too, the streetscape that the city installed back in 2002, '03, and '04, I believe, included new sidewalk and pedestrian lighting, that would not be impacted by this project in front of Kipling Village. It's just the removal of the stone wall. So we're just kind of looking for any just general concern that you may have tonight. If not, we're working with the property owner to move forward on this project.
I think Ms. Hoppe wants to join.
Yeah, I know this wall pretty well, because I drove by it every day for two years to take my daughter to school, and I watched it get worse and worse and worse. In general, I really like the pillars with the wheat and the different places in the city. Where they're kept well, then I feel like they're a really nice addition to some spots. But as far as this particular spot goes, I think that if the property owner is willing to take on putting some nice, new, fresh landscaping and hardscaping in there, and it fits within our, our design desires as a city, then I think that we should absolutely give them the opportunity to do that. It is right in front of their property, and so we should give them the opportunity to update it and make it look nice and fresh for their property.
Ms. Wood, it's in your district.
I just have a quick question about the cost. I'm assuming the cost is borne by the property owner?
That's correct.
Okay, so they're going to pay for it and maintain it, and it would be according to our design standards?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Let her rip.
Let her rip. You got another snowball joke?
No, that was his joke. My jokes are better. I think this is a gift from heaven. That wall on Kipling is, you know, backed by pavement on the other side, makes it look hot and sterile. And I think this is wonderful. If they're going to bear the expense, it'll certainly make their property look better. And I think it'll dress up the street, and since we hope to get a developer across the street from that, that would be also an addition. I would say about other walls, I think I would just leave them until we have a similar circumstance here, where somebody wants to improve that area.
Now, I'm not sure if you, how closely you looked at their landscaping plans, but this project is part of a larger project of redeveloping their whole site, so it wouldn't just be the streetscape. It moves into the interior of the project, too.
Mr. Breen.
Oh, yeah, one other thing I might add, too, is when we discussed at the staff level, depending on how, you know, council felt about this, the stone pillars that they're proposing there, they don't, they haven't proposed that I could see a color or anything like that, but we could certainly ask them if they'd be willing to, you know, maybe do a color that's similar to those, or they have the wheat logo on those, if we want to preserve those, we could certainly ask them to do that if there's a strong sentiment to do that, but.
Yeah, just if there was something that I would ask, is that they consider zero scaping in that, then that, I mean, it's just something that we have really got to be coming down on and looking at seriously. And I know that we don't have any leverage on this situation, but perhaps at least bring it up to them, that, consider that as a possibility.
And.
The use of zero scaping.
Oh, okay.
To mitigate some of the water usage.
Thank you. The wall as it's currently constructed, is it in the rightofway, or is it?
They're in an easement right now.
And so as far as them tearing that down, I guess I would like to see that, is there any way to reuse the wheat logo sort of emblems, or I don't know what you would even call it, the cement depiction, or what would those be?
Inlay or whatever.
Yeah, the inlays, in other spots, or?
Other spots in the city or at this property, or?
Either way.
Yeah, we can definitely see if we can recycle.
Yeah, salvage those, I think, is what you're meaning, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Oops, Tim's got something, I guess.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I was just going to say, I saw, I think, a banner sign in there in the plan, and I'm thinking that maybe they should, before they execute this plan, they should talk to the Wheat Ridge Business District. Although this looks like a very expensive project, we do have some grants that it looks like they would qualify for, so they should, they should talk to us.
Great, thank you.
Anything else on this? It seems to me that we're done with the meeting, then. Let's move on to our regular City Managers Matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Pond mentioned earlier that the city has a new website. It was launched, I believe, last week, and still kind of a work in progress, as most websites are. So if there's any comments that you have, and encourage citizens to, to provide any comments, if they're having problems still finding information, there's an email or a link to an email and a phone number on the site they can reach out to us, and we really want to hear back and make it as user-friendly as possible. So, thanks.
City Clerk.
Nothing further, thanks.
City Clerk.
This isn't really a clerk matter, but I just wanted to say, it's interesting, I sit here and listen to you guys talk about things, and it's, it's like deja vu all over again. You discuss a lot of the same issues that the council was discussing 10, 15, 20 years ago. Trash, snow removal, public art, things like that. I just wanted to throw in about the snow removal piece. I remember back, a particular study session, I can remember Donna Fonti brought a folder in from, I believe it was Longmont, it might have been Loveland, but they had a program, and this is, we're talking, you know, 15 years ago or more. They had a program where folks who needed their walks plowed, seniors particularly, which we have a lot of in Wheat Ridge, and if there was some repository where they could call in and say, you know, I'm, I can't get my. I, I can't get my, uh, walk scooped on a regular basis. Um, and whether it was this time or every time. And then you also had a pool of, um, volunteers, people, scouting groups, volunteer groups, church groups, just neighbors maybe, uh, but a guy who's got a, a, a snowplow. Um, and, and I thought now, and back then, we didn't have social media and now you do. And that somehow it seems like there could be that, um, well, you mentioned the neighborly issue. That was kind of mentioned several times. And if, if there was a way to set up, um, where people could call and say, I need my walk scooped. And then volunteers who say, and, and somehow they could be, be paired up so that it doesn't become this, you know, like, iron hand of the law enforcement sort of thing, that it's a, some, it's a thing that can, helps build community. Anyway, that. Um, and I guess that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, it was on the, um, recycling those wheat things. Um, there's another thing I remember back, you know, you're getting old because you live in the past. Um, there was a CML, uh, yearly workshop and, um, it was about public art. And, um, I think he was a, a planning department manager, um, gave this talk because they have a lot of public art in Pueblo, a lot of it. Public and, um, government and private too, but, um, so somebody asked, well, when, when you do a project, you know, how do you budget for public art? And he said, we really don't. We just, every time we take on a new public works project, one of the things we always ask ourselves is, how can we incorporate artistic elements into that? Um, down by their river walk, they had it just kind of funny ways that the sidewalk, that the concrete was poured in strips or graded or diff, maybe different colors. And, and it just made the, the sidewalk interesting rather than just repeated squares of concrete over and over and over and over. Maybe there's a little, little twist in it, uh, um, like the, the lines that are out in front of City Hall. Um, I've got a picture of a, uh, sidewalk at a rest stop in Iowa that, it was a kind of a railroad area and the, the sidewalk is, it's just a flat sidewalk, but the, um, sections are different colors and it looks like railroad ties and railroad tracks. And it's just a sidewalk in front of a rest stop. And that's sort of, you know, that functional art thing, but, um, with these, these wheat things too, to, you know, just when you sit down with a, um, public works project, it's like, how could we change the lines, you know, not something always so expensive that it's, you know, a $50,000 sculpture or $20,000 or it's got to be brass. Just little artistic things that, that just make public works friendlier. So, recycle what? Sure?
Make benches out of them. Do you want to start, Ms., Ms. Duran?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to the citizens who come in here, um, on Monday nights and who email and call to share their thoughts and concerns and to give us their input. We need it. Don't stop. I appreciate it. I know we all appreciate it. So, thank you.
Ms. Hoppy.
Um, yeah, so since the last time we were here, we were at the New Partners for Smart Growth, um, conference. And it was really interesting because as you sit there for days on end and, um, things just start popping in your head. Oh, what about this? What about that? What about this? So, I have like an entire notebook of notes and, um, there's some things that I, um, that kind of popped into my head that I want to try to start working on and, um, start fleshing out a little bit. And, um, so hopefully, um, some of those ideas will be able to come and bring, um, some positiveness into our community. And so, I just want to say, um, thanks for, uh, letting me go and be a part of that.
Great, hang on to those. Let's use them. Mr. Urban?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. D. Um, I just want to thank the council folks that went to the conference for smart growth because, um, I was, went when it was in Denver. It was very good. And thank you for taking the time and doing that because, um, and I'll be excited to hear what you learned and happy to help. And, um, I also want to congratulate and thank the Wheat Ridge High School students, uh, in the STEAM program, um, that came to show us their beautiful piece of art. That was really cool. I liked their little display and stuff. It was, it's cool and, and it's nice to, um, uh, where it's going at Lutheran Medical Center because I think a lot of people, um, will appreciate it there. Give them some other things to, to focus on during sometimes difficult times. And, um, it's going to snow, so shovel your sidewalk. And just wait till the summer. I'll get on your weeds too. Um, and I think, I think that's it. Oh, I know. Uh, one other thing is I'm working on a postcard and some dates to start up the, catch up, catch up with Christie again, um, as I did last year. So, uh, you'll be getting a postcard and, um, the opportunity to, to set up some meetings as, as I did last year because I know folks appreciated that. And I know also that we had some, uh, difficult decisions today and to the best of my ability, again, I want to open, um, up the, the door that folks can reach out to me and, um, ask questions and I'll answer them to the best of my ability that I'm able to at this time, but also want to make sure that people know that door is open.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I also attended the Smart Growth Conference. I want to say it was very meaningful. It was so full of good ideas that I feel overwhelmed.
You feel smart.
I don't feel any smarter. I just feel overwhelmed. Thanks. For our District Four residents and really anyone who'd like to come, we're going to have a get-together here at City Hall on Saturday at nine o'clock and a chance to come out and see Councilwoman Wooden and myself. And, uh, we just hope we have a lot of people show up because I firmly believe that citizen participation is the bedrock of our whole system. So, please come on out and see us here at City Hall Saturday at nine.
I just wanted to mention that regarding the STEAM and the STEM program, there's a gala event on April 9th and you can buy your tickets online through the, uh, Wheat Ridge High School, uh, website and it'll direct you to the Wheat Ridge Community Foundation. And they're going to have a silent auction and some specialty cars there and it's going to be a wonderful event. Thanks.
I was at the, at the, the conference, the Smart Growth Conference, um, and I was equally impressed. That's my third time to go to it. Lots and lots of things that can be applied. I think for me, the, the, the continual knowledge of, of where we are now as far as climate change and, and where we're going, it, it, we've got a lot of work to do. We really do have a lot of work to do. So, um, but I'm excited about it because it could mean some new and wonderful and attractive advances in our city, new ways of doing things that are, that are ecologically viable as well as attractive. So, I think that's, that's kind of neat. Um, so, I, I think that's it. I believe I can hammer the hammer.